Then our first quarter is roll call. Would you call us in?
Anderson.
I'm here.
Shawn, Mrs. Goddard, Tyler.
Here.
Kim.
Here.
And John.
Here.
And our approved agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stands approved. There's gonna be like a two second.
Yeah, by the third time I'll have it. Financial reports, Gail.
Okay. I'm gonna start out with just reviewing briefly on the August information, then I'm gonna go to our 17. August reports, the cash balances of the bank as of August 31st. They reflect basically minimal information going or actions going on. They, the Pebble fund balance reflects the expenditures of several, several projects that were happening during that time and very few revenues coming in. And the published budget comparison at the bottom of the secretary report shows that we're right on target for expenditures today. And then the, so that's the secretary's report for August. And then, of course, I do the general fund expense comparison. And that line item, as you can see, that, this is just until we get the budget in, which I just completed today. The salaries and benefits are minimal because we do teacher salaries and benefits into the June. So we have minimal salaries and benefits and purchase services. So we are all on line with where we should be at this point in time, but still, again, I'm gonna, minimal activity going in for the financials. The real heat of the financials started in September, which we just did our September 20th payroll. And everybody was wondering if they're going to get paid their amended contracts because they were gonna approve those tonight. I assured them that if there was, if somebody did not get approved, then we would, I would switch it. But everybody is good to go for that. The physical plant and equipment, the Pebble report, just wanted to mention some of the major purchases that have been going on or projects that have been going on is software licenses to start up the new year, landscaping projects for the stadium, intermediate school, and elementary school project. That all totaled $34,600. Bus repairs of $7,500 for one bus. And intermediate school roof was paid during August, and that was $92,800. And of course, we budgeted 110, so we're under budget for that again. I think that's been standard, but you never know when we have to increase those expenses. So that's the Pebble activity fund. We have very minimal happening there. It's gonna come back to full action coming September when everybody's back. We're gonna really work hard on, we had a few ending in June, I had to reverse back because there were a few that did not take care of their negative balance, went before they left, and so they came back with a negative balance. So we are gonna work harder next year to prepare them, to plan, and if they are going to have a negative, they need to take care of it before the end of the school, before they leave. That's the thing. It's really hard to get a hold of people after once they leave. They're not thinking about that. Nutrition fund report. The fiscal year 18 is showing a better cash balance than fiscal year 17. We are at the, an increase of $50,730 at this point where we were a year ago.
Whoa.
And the other, and then the revenues have shown increase and the expenditures show a decrease, a slight decrease. But what was really great about this report is we had increased participation. And so we're hoping, oh, do you have a question, Kim?
No.
Okay. So we're hoping that trend continues, and we'll see where it takes us the rest of the year. And so that's for the August information. The, if we could go into the CARSES transportation reports, these are the end of the year reports that are due September 15th. And I have one report that I have on my desktop that we'll talk about, but in more detail. But the information that is on the Dropbox, I just, it's such tiny, a lot of information. I just wanted to quickly touch a few items and a few things to draw your attention to. Other than that, I would, I would ask you to review it. Come back to me if you have questions at another time. These are unaudited. Our auditors come the first week in November, so keep that in mind. The first thing I want to do is basically reach out and thank the board for doing what was necessary this year to put the district in a cash position. You can tell the first thing, and the cash and investments, the line one definitely shows where our, when you made the decision to put the million dollar cash reserve in really made a difference. And you can see that on the cash, the increase from one year to the other, from 16 to 17. And the other place it shows up is the solvency ratio down at the bottom of, we increased from 1.6 to 9.98 in one year. Now, how you calculate, and this is unaudited, this is, but it's an increase of 8.38%. So basically, how that is calculated is your revenue divided by your ending, your unfunded, unassigned fund balances. So that is great information. The other area that I wanted to visit about is, is the general expenses by fund by function, and is, it's about, it's page 14 through 21. And it's the expenditures. But I, what I wanted to talk about, we always talk about, you know, expenditures, our general fund salaries and benefits, and where did we land? How are we with, this is all funds, I need to get to general fund the next page here. And this is the report, is where did we land with our percent of salaries and benefits compared for percent wise? We always talk about that every board meeting, we keep track of that. And so as a district, this year Gilbert spent, I don't have it on here, I did calculate it afterwards, but we spent 77.4% of our total expenditures here, 15 million. So salaries and benefits compared to the total expenditures was 77.4% of our total expenditures. And we always talk about 78 to 80% is our goal. And actually, that was a decrease of fiscal year 16 was 78%. So just dropped just a tad bit. And some areas that I look back to look, and we have a decrease in health services, which we had Laura Mesker took a year of leave, brought in two people to replace her. Business administration went down, and plant and operations went down. Those two areas, I would say that in those two areas, they went down because we had change of staff. Our business office was trying to be more efficient, so we've done things, we've changed things to make sure people don't get overtime. And so it's reflected in the salaries and benefits. And overtime is a big piece that we want to keep track of and become more efficient. So basically, our expenditures, that 15,341 for general fund is actually an increase of 970,000.
So if I understand you right, Gail, you're taking the 9.5 million plus the 2.3.
9.308.
Yeah. And then you're saying.
Divided by 15,341, I told, right?
Yeah, I'll do it again, but I just came up with 80.3. I'll do it again.
Oh, and I did this right before I came, so.
Cause I, okay. Is there a little difference? So the number in this, if you go, if you scroll up to the previous, there's a salary, so keep scrolling up, and I know that's a different table, but that's a 9.767 on that.
Yeah.
So what, what are the additional 200,000 for that?
Okay, you have food service in there, and food services and enterprise, so you have to take that out. Food service has to be self-sufficient. So when you look at, yeah. So I calculated just on general fund.
Okay. And then your, the denominator is 15,341.
341.
Yeah, that's 77.4.
Yeah, and fiscal year 16 was 78%, so we're just dropped about .6. Now, overall, our total expenditures in general fund increased $970,000. So of that, our salaries were 70% of that increase. So we are, you know, we're, we're putting money into our teaching staff, our salaries and benefits, so. So compared to fiscal year 16, our expenditures increased $970,000, and of that, 70% of that increase is with salaries and benefits. And so to come do a comparison of basically your revenues and expenditures and ending balances, I did a comparison spreadsheet here so we could talk about what's happening, what the revenues and expenditures, beginning balance and the ending balance. So on here, this is called the treasures report. So basically, on the general fund, we kind of just talked about that in little detail. And between the cash reserve and our expenditures, the resources or the available resources increased 1.8, almost 1.9. And our uses, our expenditures, they call it uses, but our expenditures increased $970,000. So our ending fund balance increased $925,000. And we, of course, we received the increase because we did not expend everything, all the revenue that was brought in. Now, when you go across to the, so when you go across to the student activity fund, this, you see some red here, but I wanted to tell you a little bit of, you know, the activity fund is basically the students, you're supposed to have a purpose, generate the funds, and then expense those funds. You're not supposed to have money just sitting there. So, and sometimes we do it backwards, they expense, they have a, they have a thing they wanna do, and so they, they do that, and then they raise the revenue. But however you do it, at the end of June, you're supposed to have zero money in your account or have a purpose for it in the near future. But two main things happened in our audit this past year. Our business account that we used to have in activity fund and our PTO, which is a big, PTO had quite a bit in there, was a large amount, we had to move that to general fund. And now, you'll see next year, our script was another thing that we turned over to the D E F. And I forgot to mention script. But those are some things that happened that are major players in the activity fund. So with that, I thought that was worth mentioning on the revenue and expenditure side.
Where would the cash levy that we voted on to do to improve our cash status and improve our solvency, would, I mean, that would, I'm assuming that's part of the 900, 000 increase?
Yes.
Is that right?
Right.
And that was, how much was that just last year? How much was?
The levy previous year, I'd have to look to see what levy we put in for cash reserve. Obviously, it is probably around 200,000 to 300,000, I guess. I think it was below 5. I think it was around 200,000 to 300,000.
Okay, alright. But that would've been included in there?
Yes.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so you go across the management fund. Management fund is just basically, you know, is just for the insurance, district insurance, unemployment, and work comm, plus it is also our early retirement. And so we, when we do our district, our budget, annual budget, we wanna, I've taught you about keeping, building our balance here because early retirement, we need to protect ourselves so we don't have to increase that all in one year to make up for early retirement. So we're slowly keeping, trying to work back to getting our balance back up there. So this year, it increased 81,000. So hopefully, we can do, keep gradually doing that. So our ending fund, our revenues are more than our ending expenditures, so we don't have to do a big increase in one year. Our save fiscal year 18 will increase, we've kind of detalked as a board to get ourselves in a position for our future projects that we were gonna be, increase our expenditures in the save and moving them out of Pebble. So right now, it shows that our expenditures are not as high as it's been in the past, but that'll probably change going forward. And so I just wanted to mention that. That will be probably different going forward. Our Pebble, our ending fund balance just went down $9,500, but we have been doing some major projects. So still not bad for doing, accomplishing some of the projects that we've been doing. And so we, so that's, that one. Debt service, basically money in and money out. This debt service is basically here to generate funds, to pay our bonds, our GO bonds, and our revenue bonds. That's the only purpose for this fund. And then the enterprise fund is our food service fund, and we were working out this and trying to increase participation. We've tried some different things to increase our revenues and generate funds because general fund, or excuse me, enterprise funds has to be self-sufficient. And to pay salaries, benefits, food costs, and all those increased costs, so we have to either, we do a combination of both. We have to increase participation to increase our reversals from federal and state, and then we want sales from the students and increase participation and try to hold down the cost, but you can only do that a little bit because you always have increased costs, cost of supplies and, and food. So overall, we did see an increase in the ending fund balance just because our revenue increased and then our, our expenses also decreased, so we showed an increase of our ending fund balance by $20,000. Great position going forward. Hopefully, we can continue this, increase our participation and move forward on that. The one thing I wanted to talk about is on the long-term, on the debt of the balance sheet, the long-term debt, just wanted to, just remind, we saw this in the audit, and just wanted, there's another location here.
What sheet are you on now, Gail?
Still the same report, and it's gonna be, it's called the fiscal year 17 balance sheet by Long Term Governmental Account Group. And I just wanna show, this is another location where it has our debt, and then it also has our long-term liabilities, but the 6 million, 6.6 million is unfunded. It's, it's part of the OPEB, are in for IPRs, we have to book it this year. We have to book it, and we used to never have to do that. Now, with the laws and legislation, we have to book our long-term liability for our insurance and IPRs, but we don't fund the 6.6 million.
Pension liability.
But we have to report a pension liability. So that's one thing that if you're looking at it, again, it's like, oh my goodness, 6.6 million in our debt, where's, just wanted to bring that up again. So then with that, I'd like to go to page 36 and talk about our special ed. Now, I'm starting my third year here, so I don't have a lot of history of special ed here, but it seems like the trend is about, about 400,000, $500,000 deficit. And so, and we, we have a little bit more information for you tonight on that, and we can talk about it further, but. So compared to a year ago for fiscal year 16, our level, you can see the kind of the shift of how we have level one, level two, and level three students. Level one balance deficit did decrease, but it also shifted more to level two. And level three decreased in the deficit, but we showed a deficit in all level one, two, and three. But overall, we did see a positive, we, this is kind of, we gained $86,000, $86,491 in a less deficit. So a positive compared to a year ago. So if you, we have the opportunity, because of this deficit, this is due to the state not fully funding special ed. So as a district, one way we can protect our ending fund balance, our spending authority is we have the capability of levying our, requesting allowable growth, and then requesting allowable growth to remain whole, and then the second part of that is when we do the budget, requesting them, the levy to replace the dollars. But now, we're just asking for the allowable growth to bring us whole for spending because we overspent what the state gave us. So at 495, 488.10.
So you're asking for the spending authority, and then we get that a year later, is that correct?
Yeah, so we're almost a year and a half, if not two years, behind on special ed.
But we'll pick up 579 for last year, this year.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, everybody get that?
So, so then with that in mind, if we can maybe talk about, briefly about our special ed for this year.
Yeah, some of the things, and the people back there can probably even maybe update it even more than what I have. Just roughly what we show from 16 to 17, that we have a total enrollment of five special ed students total than what we had last year. We ended up, with those special ed students, there is also some things that come along with that. There's sometimes a para that goes with them. We have increased for this year 3.25 FTE on paras. We have also figured that because of our numbers, I believe that we did a part-time special education teacher. So when you combine those things, those are the things that are driving your, your cost. And, you know, it, it changes from day to day. I know that when we were getting close to starting a school, some of the different building principals were looking for their para because they've had a new person move in. In the IEP, it says that they need to have a para with them. Some of them need specialized transportation. And again, we knew right off the bat, and as we have the makeup in our buildings, that we were gonna have to have another halftime special education teacher, which we built into the, the figures. But, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing our numbers increase overall, and we're seeing our special education numbers increase too. And some of those demands are different. So that's why, I mean, we don't like to run a deficit, that's not something that we try to do, but we are in charge of making sure that we provide the education for the different kids that come into our district, and that's what we're doing with some of this. Do you guys have anything you want to add from the building principal standpoint? I know there's been kind of a challenge there as we, as we try to make sure that we have all the IEPs met and things like that with the paras and things? Anything to add?
Is that it?
Gail, do you have an estimate of what that'll look like then with that addition? It's been the nearest 100,000?
I'm, I'm thinking going forward that, you know, around, with the, well, having the staff, we're gonna be another a year and a half behind, so we may look at ending this year with those, at $500,000, 550 again.
Cause that's the gap.
So that's a big difference when you add those salaries and benefits of those five and halftime teacher, and then the, the funding lag's behind. But, you know, it is what it is, and you have the, you know, the board has the option to, you know, request allowable growth and fund it with, you know, a levy to replace those dollars, so we don't have to go elsewhere to reduce expenditures elsewhere to make it whole, so. And then the other, only other piece that I wanted is the transportation piece. And Bruce does this, I do the financial piece, and then Bruce gives me the information on the, the financial and the number, or excuse me, not the financials, but the numbers of students in the, so what he reported is that the numbers of students renting buses decreased. So overall, with that, it increased our, our cost per mile. So I wanted it from 564 to 619. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. And so when somebody rents a bus from us, and we have, we will charge $6.19 per mile, which includes driver, fuel, everything. And we do have that, you know, people say, hey, can we, you know, can we rent your bus and driver, and this, we would calculate it by 619 per mile for reimbursement rate. Okay? Other than that.
So our, our student number went down 250?
From transportation, yeah, that's.
That seems huge. What, you're saying 250 less kids? It says 1,104 last year, 855.
It's average number of students.
I mean, can you explain that?
That, I would have to check with, with Bruce. It seems like our numbers would be going up because our number of students are going up. But I know that when they did their, what's that?
Being transported, yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know if that, they're all being transported or not.
Are they the ones that can be transported or just the ones that choose to be transported?
Choose to be transported.
Choose to be transported.
There's a lot that choose not to be, so.
But I get, I get that, but I'd, I think that's worth exploring.
Okay.
When that's a 30% or 20, 20 or 25% decrease.
And, yeah, and, and the other thing is Bruce was sick during last time, so I was, it was kind of a time we weren't sure, you know, on responsibilities.
Do you have any idea what, or I'd suggest looking up 15 and 14 just to see what the numbers were. Maybe, maybe 16 was a big increase and we just didn't see it.
Yeah, let's see where the trend is.
That's a 250 student decrease, which, we're not, we haven't dropped routes.
No.
We bought another bus. I mean, I, my assumption was we're adding or increasing.
I'll report back when I find that information.
That's perfect.
Any further questions for Gail on the financials? Any questions?
Not, not for tonight, but I would like to go back to Pebble. I think I probably understand what's going on, but, but I really appreciate the reports. And you go back three years, and three years ago, our expenditures were 530,000, and this year, our budget is 903. So it's a 70% increase over three years. So not for tonight, but Lindsay, if you could come back and kind of describe.
What we've done.
What that is.
Sure.
I think some of it's pretty obvious, but that's a big jump, especially when we're talking about potentially using some of that for bonding, so I just think we need to make sure we're comfortable with what the Pebble is.
Well, the only, that one thing that does come to my head is, is they changed language for technology purchases and things to be moved to the Pebble, so we've taken advantage of that. But that's the one thing that pops in my head.
Yeah, there's 90,000 in software that can now be Pebble, and it's out of the general fund, and which is a good thing.
And you can bundle, and, yeah. So, but we'll get more detail on that.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Can we get a motion on that?
Entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
So moved.
The second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Yeah.
All opposed? It stands approved. Also, on the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda if no one needs to pull anything off of there.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stands approved. Certify the election results. Yep.
Official results, this is what they look like. Canvas is right here. So we're just saying.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve the canvas of the votes.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? It stands approved. And the last agenda item for our last meeting is to thank Shawn Barber for his past service. It's been great to have Shawn on the board, and we really appreciate his service. And then we would also like to introduce and welcome Ed Mordau. So thank you for presenting. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? We stand. We stand adjourned.
Yeah, I'm out.
Okay, so now, I'm gonna call attention.
Yeah.
This is the final meeting is what we're gonna have now.
Did you get a new one already? No.
Her new one's on the way.
Are they order at six thirty and three P M?
I'll build one real quick.
Um, roll call, Brian.
Still here?
Tyler.
You don't.
Kim? Kim?
Still here.
Okay. John?
Here.
And Deb?
Come on, Deb.
I don't have it. Is Brian, is the Spotify Brian's the only one that's open?
Oh. Happy to move around.
Okay, Deb.
I don't have ten classes for that.
Here, this is the bigger version of it. Boards, uh, excuse me, is that the board, that's the board member?
Board member, the board monitor.
Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? Will you faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge all the duties of the office of board member in the Gilbert Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you so much.
Put a smiley face.
I like that, I like that.
I wish I had a smiley face.
Oh, John. Sorry, John.
I can say a new.
To continue to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, will you faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge all the duties of the office of board member in the Gilbert Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
Aye.
Thank you.
You wanna run the election new deal?
Sure. Election of board president? Are there any motions?
I'm gonna nominate John again. Is that how this works? I can't remember.
Yep.
So you have a motion for John Nelson? Is there a second? Tyler? Has a second? We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? Brian?
I vote for John.
Uh, we're, roll call.
Oh, sorry, I'm still here.
Is that a, yeah?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Tyler?
That's good, that's good.
Sorry, I got a few.
Kim?
Yes.
Okay. John?
Yes.
And Deb?
Yes.
Okay, we have a president. John will be our, continue to be our president.
Thank you, Gail. I entertain nominations for election of vice president.
I move to appoint Brian Anderson as vice president.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Stand approved. Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you. You asked me to do that. Never sat close, I've never sat next to John, so I was.
What order, then I'll sit here.
Yeah, you might, wait, you're right. It's a little higher.
Next order of business is to appoint void secretary and treasurer, or entertain a motion for that.
I move for Gail Hawkins.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Stands approved. And then for meeting dates, do we want to stay with the second Monday at six o'clock? Does that work okay for you, Deb?
Yep.
Okay, Kim?
Yep.
Okay. Entertain a new idea motion for that.
That's, you can just keep it, it's, it's no change, so we can just keep it as that as well, okay?
Does that still work best for the administrative team? We've talked about going later, or going earlier, but six is good?
Yep.
And then, we have oral reports, and I would like to, if it's okay with the board, to move Drew to the, the top of the list here, to just give us a quick.
Hey, 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 John, the only reason I'm saying that is you're, you're almost retired.
His clock's running.
This is, this is saving taxpayers money at work right here.
Just saying.
I'll be quick about it.
Hi, love. Yeah, good evening, and welcome to the school board. Have you served on the board before, or a school board before?
No.
All right, well, you don't know what you're in for. I have a, actually, a not-so-brief document I can share with you. Sort of a quick run-through of some of the functions and duties of the board. I'll share it with you first, Deb, and you can pass them down the way. And I've got plenty of copies, Gail, I'll partner some extras with you if you like. It's just, I, I was asked, the, your former board president and your new board president asked that I visit with you, I believe, John, it was your idea, maybe it was yours, Lindsay, but just to visit with the board briefly about service on the board, your, your office, your authority, and some of your duties and responsibilities in your service on the board. And then the board is sort of a unique creature as well in the state of Iowa. You're a, you're a volunteer, and thank you for volunteering for that service, but it's a big job. And as big as, as it is, there will be times when it's not, there's, you wish you could do more. And so I want to visit with you a little bit about that. There are, as a member of the board, you've got an opportunity to have a lot of impact, you've got a lot, an opportunity to gain more information, but your, what you say and what you do will have a lot more weight as well, too. Not just you, you're no longer speaking as just a private citizen anymore, but you're speaking and you're acting as a, as a member of the board of directors of this public corporation, which is essentially what it is. You are a member of the board of directors of a public corporation here, and what you say and do in that capacity may have impact and weight, and, and sometimes ramifications for the district itself. So I just want to run through real quickly, I want to sort of highlight your, your, your functions as members of the board. For some of you, this will be old news, but there's a lot of material here that you may find interesting in, in your own time. But I just wanted to remind the board that there's some restrictions and some controls that might prevent you from acting as quickly or as adroitly as you might want to act from time to time. The number one of them being that as a, as a board of directors, you're subject to the open meetings law. And this is now an individual responsibility of each of the five members of the board. Individually, if you want to get something done, and you want to meet with fellow members of the board, and you want to meet with your administrative officials or whatnot, if there's a majority of you that want to get together to talk about taking some kind of action, you must comply with the open meetings act. And the, which requires that there be advance notice, an agenda for your meeting, publication of the time, place, date of your meeting, the business that's gonna be conducted by the board. And that will sometimes frustrate you as members of the board, because there's things happening, there's things going on, you want to talk about it, you want to get something done. But you've got to, to respect the, the fact that the open meetings laws, the whole point of it being that the members of the public have an opportunity to see how the board does its thing, right? So whenever there's a majority of you collected together to talk about district business and operations, you must be thinking about the open meetings act. You have to, have to at least keep that in mind. That doesn't stop a majority if you get together to go to a football game, or, or a social or civic event, or something like that. It's, it's when you're, when you're talking with each other about conducting school board business, keep that open meetings act in mind. And there's more material in here about some of the, the specifics of the open meetings act. There's, you're, we're in an open meeting, you've got a published agenda, you've got an order of business, these are the topics that will be discussed. You know, basically, it stops the board from, from suddenly doing something that the public isn't even aware of, that the board's got in mind to do. And then you may have a great idea that pops up during the middle of a meeting, but can you suddenly take action on that idea? My recommendation would be no, because you haven't published notice, and you haven't given the public a chance to be aware that that business is on the agenda. So keep open meetings act in, in mind. One of the, there are exceptions. You know, there's, you're, obviously, you're dealing with students, and individual students have individual issues, and we gotta respect confidentiality that applies to individual students. If you have a matter that comes before the board that deals with an individual student, you may be able to go into closed session to talk about that student and consider her or his circumstances, right? Same thing with individual employees. There's opportunities for closed sessions for limited purposes, in order to protect some of the district's interests or protect the individuals who are being involved. You know, as, as your lawyer, then my favorite one, of course, is sometimes you can go into closed session and talk to me. Mr. Haylen might be interested to know that, you know, you can go into closed session and talk about acquisition of property, or sale of property, or that sort of thing, if you have building projects in mind, and you have to plan for those sorts of things. So there's limited reasons you can go into closed session, but you gotta keep in mind that open session is your default function. Same way with records. Here's the next thing, public records. In your role as a member of the board of directors, you may be, you may have access to records of the district, you may create records of the district. And so your communications amongst each other on business of the district, you know, as opposed to birthday parties or something like that, district-related communications, typically email messages, you gotta think those are gonna be public records. There are, once again, there's exceptions that, that will set, make some records confidential. Students and staff are the biggest examples there, or maybe communications with your lawyer, once again. But keep in mind that these are public records. And even confidential student records are accessible by families, okay? A family of a student can say, I wanted to see all the records about my son or daughter, and that might include records from the board, or from administrators, or teachers, or, or other staff working with the students. So I, I always advise all school people that all communications, you might be very casual about an email that you're sending to a work colleague, but all communication should be, should maintain a very business-like tone, and stay focused on the business of the district. So, so beware of that. There's something else that might change your life just a little bit. You know, you might get calls with, from the administration, we've got a public record request, they want to see all your emails about, you know, the board meeting last night, for example, that kind of thing. So be, just beware that there's an accountability aspect to being a member of the board of directors of a school district, that, that I think for, for many of you veterans, I know that it's become second nature, but it's, it's a worthwhile reminder now and then anyway.
Gail, we record these meetings, is there a requirement on how long you would need to keep those recorded?
No, the, the, recording the meeting from start to finish is actually an addition. There's no requirement that you do that at all.
Okay.
Now, Gail is keeping official board minutes as your board secretary, and she'll keep those forever. But the, the audio or video recordings that you make is entirely up to the members of the board, how long you want to maintain that. Which is basically true about all your other business records, emails, for example. How long do you preserve emails? You pretty much get to decide that for yourself. But now, student records or personnel records, or, you know, or, or business records of a different kind, you might keep for, for other lengths of time, depending on what the record is. But your standard everyday traffic on their server, you can have your own rules about how long you maintain that. Same would be true with your, recording these meetings, okay? But the, the, we talk, we sometimes, we hear about the government and the sunshine, I don't know if any of you have heard that phrase before. The idea, it's all about, actually, the buzzword these days is transparency. It's all about making governmental functions, even government, as local and intimate as the local school board, is the government, and the government is accessible to the citizens. That's, that's the bottom line there. There's a little note right on the bottom of that first page, something called Dillon's Rule, that, that, that I just, I always try to acquaint school boards with, and it's, it's a little bit of a limitation on what you can do as a member of the board. Dillon's Rule basically says that school districts operate for limited purposes, to provide educational programs and activities for students. And, and school boards are limited to that mission in the law. And if they may, they may want to do something entrepreneurial, but they can't unless there's something in the, the Iowa code that authorizes them to do that. And so, a good point of frustration we have for lots of our school board clients around the state is they'll look at community colleges and say, well, they can do all sorts of interesting things, you know, for programs, for their students, and for the community itself. Community colleges have much broader grant of authority than K-12 school districts do. And so they can be more entrepreneurial in some of their efforts, and they can, and they can be more creative with, even with things like their funding sources to a certain extent. School districts, public school districts, you know, when I listen to your financial report, there's a reason why you have these certain funds for certain purposes, because the legislature's told you, here's your money, but you can only use it for this, and you can only have this much money for that. And school districts are oftentimes constrained by the state law on what they can do and how creative they can become. And the shorthand phrase for that is Dillon's Rule. You can only do what the legislature lets you do, okay? So sometimes, even, even a creative idea, it's not, it's not always, how do we do it? The first question often is, can we even do it in the first place? Okay? So that's, and oftentimes, though, we can find, if there's a will, there's, we can find a way. There's conflicts of interest statutes, a little bit more material there for you, but as a member of the board of directors, you have to be a little bit mindful of, of potential conflicts of interest in your public service versus your private life and, and your private business affairs. And one thing that's a big difference between the public and private sector is what, what in Iowa we call the gift law. This applies to all of your employees, administrators, teachers, support staff, and board members, so it's, you're all in this together. But you know, in the private sector, it's not unusual for vendors and suppliers and contractors to, to offer, I'll call them free samples, or all sorts of incentives. So maybe you're somebody who may be in that business, you know, where, where that's part of the, the act of doing business in the private sector, not in Iowa in the public sector. We have to be very mindful about it to receive any personal advantage. You know, years ago, while the big software producers were wanting to fly school board people out to, you know, Cupertino, or, or, or Seattle, I don't know what businesses are located there, but they wanted to fly school people out to those places for site visits to, to try and sell software. Well, school people can't accept those kinds of gifts. The school district might be able to take advantage of offers, but school individuals cannot. You'd be very mindful of anybody that wants to do business with the district who's also trying to give the, the free samples to get you, to get your business. Happens all the time in the private sector, it's perfectly legitimate, not so in the public sector. And the Iowa Campaign Finance Office takes that very, very seriously in Iowa. So it's something to be aware of. So if somebody wants to give freebies, a business relationship, that's why I always have to tell superintendent, I can't take him out to lunch. So that and I'm a cheapskate. But, but I can't, you know, I, as a contractor, can't offer freebies to any individuals in this room in order to try and curry favor and garner support, because that's essentially, it's, it's considered a bribe in the state of Iowa. So the, and the Iowa Campaign Finance and Ethics Office enforces that law for all public officials. The, and other issues about using the office for, for personal business opportunities, there's rules against that, too. Let me, let me just finish up with sort of just giving you a casting about what, what you're really doing as members of the board. And largely, what you're doing is, we can almost track it like we do the three branches of government, you know, legislative, executive, and judicial. You're essentially all three branches here for the school district itself. Your primary function is legislative, you're setting policy, you're talking about your budget, you're allocating resources, you're even talking about taxes. You know, so you're a legislative branch for the school district. And much of that role is working with each other and formulating policy, monitoring district activities. Your role is, is in, you're, you're essentially the legislative branch, there are five of you, for the school district, which, which is a good reminder that, and none of you individually has much power at all. You guys can obtain information from the district, you have access to information from your administration, it's even, maybe even confidential information. But can any one of you act independently to direct the affairs of the district? And the short answer is no. You're not like, you're like ward politicians and city government that might be able to control what goes on in their ward. You don't have that authority, you know, public school district in Iowa. You're just one member of the five member legislative body. And so it's, it's, on any given issue, whatever a majority of you believes is the direction to go, that's the direction you're going. to go, that's the direction you're going. And then good boardsmanship is all about, then, even if you're the minority, you support the majority vote and you, you know, you may debate the issue with each other in this forum, but once the issue's decided, you're members of that one legislature that made that decision. The executive function is basically through oversight of the superintendent and the administration. You know, the last note I have in the first outline is all about the chain of command. And maybe I'll close there in a second, because let me, let me just talk about judicial function, because that's, it's fairly rare that you also exercise judicial functions, but from time to time, you'll be called upon to act as a hearing body, you know, where you're now listening to a controversy and making a decision based on the facts that you hear in that controversy. The two biggest examples are when we may be recommending a student for suspension or expulsion, and it may come to the board, or a student is challenging student discipline at the building level, it comes to the board, and the board is much like a jury or a judge in that setting. Same thing with personnel recommendations. Oftentimes, the administration will bring personnel recommendation to you for employee discipline, suspension, or perhaps termination, and once again, you're acting like a jury. And in that respect, we want to make sure that board members always know that they've got to be fair and impartial to the, to the individual whose job or whose education is on the line in those cases. So a little reminder that sometimes you're like a judicial branch as well, but let me finish with the executive branch, because it's all about running the railroad now. You're policymakers, but you're also exercising executive function in terms of your oversight of the administration. And although I use the phrase in the outline, chain of command, the actual metaphor I like to, I better use is the way school districts are structured, it's really an hourglass is the metaphor I like to use. School board being, I'll put you, for today's purposes, I'll put you at the top of the hourglass, and I'll put staff and students at the bottom, but you could just as easily turn that hourglass the other way and put students first and put yourselves last, so I don't want to, I'm not trying to make any judgments here, but think of, you want to think of your organization in that hourglass, because what, essentially what you do is as a Board of Directors, you have direct oversight of your superintendent. Your superintendent is the center of that hourglass for you, and you might hear from taxpayers, you might hear from neighbors, you might hear from parents, they might be above you in the hourglass to a certain extent, but they hear from you, you should, what we always recommend is you work through your administration team, your superintendent and your administrative team to see in your oversight function as the, as the executive function. I say that because if we skip the hourglass and skip the chain of command and each of you becomes involved in every student's education or every facility improvement that's not on time or on schedule or whatever, or everything, you know, suddenly we've, we've got chaos. And so it's just a quick reminder that you do have the power and authority to oversee your administrative team and staff, and your superintendent should be the lead person in that effort. And so you can communicate with your superintendent, and your superintendent should be the leader of your administrative team, and you work, and you work through, you work with each other in the process of monitoring and keeping an eye on that executive function of your government here at the, at the local school district. So you've got good help here, I know that, you're well-equipped to do great things for your students, and I mean that for everybody on the team that I've ever met, and so I think you're going to have a lot of exciting things happening here, but there will always be bumps in the road, too, I can guarantee it. There's, nobody's immune from trouble, and trouble will happen, and then that's when working together and working through your administrative team will, will be all that much more important. So I don't want to belabor that. I've got, there's a lot of material here that you can look over if you like, or maybe a refresher for some of you, you that are more veteran members of the board. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The good news, I'm not aware of any particular lawsuits that are pending right now, Lindsay, so we don't have to go there.
Oh, they have to go there.
Right now? Yes?
So Drew, probably two. In the case where there's email that comes in from a patron or from somebody, and they name everybody in the board and whoever else, what's your counsel on the response to that? And I'm trying to put it in the context of what you just shared.
Yeah, let's, and some measures you will be able to address right away. You know, and you can give the answer. Hey, what did the board do last night at its meeting? You can answer that question, right? But more commonly, what you're going to get is a complaint. Hey, my son didn't, didn't get picked up by the bus yesterday, and he stood out there all morning before I realized he was still standing there, or something like that. Well, what are you going to do about it? You know, that's the question to you as a board member. Maybe you're just the one gets it, and maybe it's blasted to all of you. You know what I usually recommend is, well, thank you, Mrs. Smith, for your concern, I'm sorry to hear about what happened with your son. I encourage you to contact the transportation director, or I encourage you to work with your building principal, or work with the, in other words, you direct them back. At the same time, you might, you might give your superintendent a heads up. Hey, I received a complaint from Mrs. Smith, said her son wasn't picked up on time yesterday. But do you become personally charged with the responsibility to see what happened to Junior at his bus stop in the morning? The answer is no. If, people will, from time to time, expect you to do that. Well, I elected you, and you should earn the pay you're getting paid from the school district. I've heard that one before. I don't know what they're paying you, but it's way too much, that sometimes people will complain in that fashion. And, no, thank you very much, Mrs. Smith, I'll make sure the superintendent is aware of your concern, but I encourage you to also contact, in other words, they'll want to go straight to the top, but they should also be redirected to follow the chain of command. Yeah? Don't ignore them.
Yep. Don't ignore them, but I'm assuming anything that's related to presenting individual judgment or anything like that would be inappropriate and...
Pretty much, because what the...
Targeted back to the superintendent for follow-up on this or whatever.
Right. You want to direct them back, because probably because you don't know the whole story either, and you, and you don't want to take on the responsibility of learning the whole story for everybody who's going to have a complaint, lest you give up the rest of your life and do just this. And you're still then probably not serving in your role as, as the, a member of the board who should be looking, you know, at the horizon rather than at his repeat, right?
And once something is put, let's say, in an email, then that is public.
It could be.
And it could come back to the board, I'm assuming.
It very could, yes, yes. And what you hope for is all these little things, the chain of command does solve whatever the issue is, or they find out it's a false alarm, problem solved that way. The email may be a public record, it now nevertheless may be a confidential public record, if it's about a mother's writing about her son, for example, or what have you. But if it's just somebody talking about taxes, for example, or, or why, why isn't the program performing better? Let's pick on track and field, it's football season, so let's pick on track and field. Why isn't the track team doing better? You know, I don't know, but let's, you know, I encourage you to visit with the coach if your son or daughter runs track or that sort of thing. But yeah, I would encourage, encourage them to follow the chain of command, and then you can also refer the thing back through the chain of command. Hopefully, the hourglass works, the system works. Bear in mind, you know, and we're very casual in our communications anymore, in email and what have you, and what I, what I would not want to see is, let's go back to that bus driver scenario I just said, well, Mrs. Smith says her son, bus driver didn't pick up her son, the reply should not be, oh my God, that's the fourth time this week I've heard from a parent about something like that. No, it's just, thank you, Mrs. Smith, and we will look into it from my end, but you please contact the transportation department, and we'll see what we can do.
Sure. Yeah, thanks very much. The other one, talk to us or any counsel on social media, I mean, relative to a board member, an elected official in social media, whether that's Facebook or whatever, I mean, is there any, any counsel there?
Yeah. I think the, it can be an extremely effective means of communication, but, you know, the rule of thumb, I think, is you wouldn't say anything on social media that you wouldn't say in this room with a room full of people. And we tend to forget that. When we're writing in, you know, the privacy of our own, you know, office or kitchen table or wherever it is we're working on these things, you, we can be loose and casual and fire off things that we really didn't package for a mass audience. And of course, social media is a mass audience, whether you intended it or not, it's going to be retweeted or forwarded or what have you. So my words of counsel for all social media is, what you say may be used against you, but you've got to say it like you're saying it in this room at an official board meeting with a room full of people here. So you need to be diplomatic, you need to, you need to be careful with your words. That doesn't mean you can be, you don't have to be very passionate about what it is that you're concerned about. And people will, your, your local leaders, by definition, you've been elected to public office here, and people will look to you to have opinions and to speak their mind and to advocate for the best possible programs you can have in the school district. There's nothing wrong with that, but you want to keep that up at that 30,000-foot level, and you're not going to talk about that lousy bus driver Bracken who can't seem to remember what his bus route is, right? You know, so you've got to, you've got to stay at the level of your office as you do so, but I don't, you know, the days of thinking that social media is taboo or gone, it's, you know, corner of the realm now, you know, so it's there, and I think, and it could be a very useful, effective tool for communicating with mass audiences. What I do counsel, though, employees about, though, is any kind of communication with students, I think you want, once again, act as if there's other people in the room. In fact, I encourage you to add people to the, to the communication. Typical example, you know, coach and a student athlete may be corresponding back and forth about something, and then, and then the conversation takes a turn, you know? Thanks, Coach, for the help about my sprinting, I'm going to stick with track and field, and my diet, but oh my God, my parents are fighting all the time, what do I do about that? You know, now we've, we've got a whole nother layer, and that, and what happens in that communication now becomes vitally important to people beyond the two people involved in that communication. There's whole family who might be affected, or a school climate that might be affected, so beware.
Drew, would it be fair to say that, that when we're on social media with regard to school issues, we have to think in fiduciary capacity as board members? We really have to kind of pull out our individualism to a degree? Talk, speak to that.
I won't quite go that far. I think you are still individuals with, with your own minds on what directions you may want the district to go, or, or on the issues of the day, whatever they may be. But I think that when you say fiduciary relationship, I do think you have to put the district's interests above your own, which a true fiduciary would do. And the district is who you serve or what you serve, the district as a whole, its interests are more important than your own, which I think is a fairly simple description of what a fiduciary does. But I, no, I wouldn't necessarily say, though, that individual board members cannot have independent minds. Even disagreement, bearing in mind, now I'm going to talk about boardsmanship, disagreement with each other as ladies and gentlemen, and then, but when an issue is resolved and the board has decided this is the direction of the district, or good boardsmanship would say that you're all supportive of the direction that was decided by a majority of the members. Always remember that, you know, you might be in a majority on this decision, on this board meeting, you might be in the minority in the next, and then a majority in the one after that, and that, and that boardsmanship among you becomes very, very important, so you can continue to collaborate, disagree respectfully when you, when you must, but then be supportive of the majority on each issue that the majority decides. By Marsh... This is the good thing, in Iowa, we're pretty good at that. You know, lots of other folks in government aren't so good at that, but the local government in Iowa, by and large, we're pretty good at that, and I'm sure you will be, too. Any other questions for me?
Before we scared Deb, the chain of command thing worked pretty good, as far as, not a lot of, not a lot of board issues that we have.
Right. Yep, I will, I will stick with that.
Yeah, the difficulty is you're...
Promise.
Your friends and neighbors may misunderstand that, that's why I always give that old presentation, your friends and neighbors might think, well, now that you're on the school board, can you get my kid on the first chair in the orchestra? Or, you know, or can you, can you, you know, get rid of Mrs. Jones, that bus driver who keeps missing my kid? Well, no, you don't supervise the bus driver Jones, but you work with the board and you do supervise the administration, and you can work with them to try and help solve problems. Yeah, but your friends and neighbors might think you can do things now that you're just one member of a five-member board.
Okay. I have one question, if I could, and it kind of relates to something that Tyler mentioned. So in that situation where you do have somebody who comes to you with a problem, and you, you forward that on through the chain of command, is it fair to say then, as a board member, I back out of that? I'm no longer a part of the resolution of that?
Probably, that would usually be best practice. You know what you can do, though, is it doesn't hurt to follow up, you see, and now you're, you're slipping from your, just basically as a, as a communicator into an evaluator or, I'm looking at the executive function once again. Hey, we made you aware of that problem two weeks ago, give me a quick follow-up, is the problem solved?
Got it.
You know, that, there's nothing wrong with that, as if, now you're, what you're doing is you're double-checking, you know, what you want to be careful of is second-guessing if you don't have all the information, which is, which is a very tempting thing, we all do it, as a, sort of naturally, we do that, but let, let the, I'll use a, your regular teacher, for example, that teacher is in the classroom every day with that student, and they know that student better than you do. And so if a parent complains that they, they don't think their teacher, teacher treated the student fairly, what you need to make sure is that complaint was looked into and resolved, not how it was resolved, because you don't know, most often, okay? And that's a, it's tempting to jump in and say, oh, no, no, I know exactly what happened, even though you weren't there, because that's just human nature, we do that all the time. Yeah, you're, which kind of brings it back to, you're a member of a board of directors, you know, you're not like a free agent who's, who has license to sort of run roughshod over the whole organization looking for wrongs to right, that sort of thing. You're a member of the board of directors. Okay?
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Good enough. Well, thank you for the time. Good luck to you. Hopefully, things go well for you in this, this upcoming school year.
Yeah.
Pressure.
Welcome.
Yeah, no pressure.
Anything else, Gail, I can email you that doctor if you like, but I should have one copy, all right?
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Sorry to...
Okay.
Pleasure. All right.
Good night.
Good night. The floor is yours.
All right. I'm going to presume everyone has a copy of the update electronically. We're here just to make this short and sweet tonight, just to email out to you an update in terms of where we're at, and we have completed all the focus group meetings with respect to all the buildings, athletics, Ag Ed, and we just had great, great response from people and good participation, so now we're refining the plans, we're going to start with the cost opinions, and we will be ready, basically, we're on schedule to deliver to you, what we said we were going to, the completion of Phase Two. Not surprisingly, we're trying to keep scope creep down, but there are some very, and we'll go over this with you when we meet in October, there have been some warranted and meritorious increases in square footage in some areas, and we'll, we'll highlight that, but anticipate that we'll probably be coming back with a final report that will show more than what you have available, but the point is, we'll just work together to come up with some solutions that allow you to accomplish as many objectives as possible. So that's, that's kind of in, in general, the overview. Middle school, I think some of you saw the emails regarding the lack of, at least apparently a lack of recorded easement, allowing that diagonal traversing on the south side of middle school, and I think you also saw my response that, well, if there's not record of easement, then I think it's Centennial Link responsibly to move it, not yours, and so I did suggest that the check be held, and I don't know, Lindsay, if you had a chance to talk, I did, I did chat with Drew to see if he's involved, he said he's not involved, I imagine somebody else is involved.
Right, right.
So, anyway, I had suggested to Lindsay that setting a deadline, I think if you, they may know that, uh-oh, or, oh, we got a problem here in Houston, and they may not want to really own up to it or deal with this, so maybe try and get a, hey, we need to know by this date. And again, I want to stress, Centennial Link has been phenomenally cooperative and very responsive, and I can't, it's rare nowadays to have a utility company provide the service that they provided to the district, so I would like to try and keep that friendly dialogue going versus saying, hey, you guys screwed up, now move your line, but I don't think that you have, I don't think the district needs to pay for it, if there's no record, they just basically, but there may be one at the courthouse, so it may end up being that ultimately, the district does need to pay for that. So did you get ahold of it?
Yeah, I've talked to, it would be one in Drew's firm, and we're ready to go with the letter. the letter. And again, we're trying to do this in a cooperative manner from the standpoint of they've been cooperative with us, but we would like to know by a certain date if they do have an easement or if they don't have an easement. So the gentleman that I'm working with at Alaric Cooney, like I said, we're ready to go. You have not heard anything more from them, is that right? We can have that actually go out tomorrow. And again, what we're trying to do is, we're not trying to strong-arm or anything like that. We're just saying, if you have this, we need to know, because we need to know what's going to happen. So we're ready for that.
And there should, if there is one, there should be one in file at the courthouse. I'm not going to tell them that. That's all they do is work with easements, so they should know that. So maybe imagine just checking and finding out if there's an easement record and there's not. But anyway, so and also we're trying to make sure that they honor the amount of money that, or the proposal that doesn't, you know, go up. And I think you probably argue the point that, hey, we've been very proactive, or the check has been cut, but we're not moving forward with sending the check until we have a conclusion. So last thing, this is just, we had initially talked about on the 22nd, on the 2nd of October, having a work session. And as in Phase One, it's really important, in my opinion, that all five board members be here. Tyler had something come up understandably, so we're looking at possibly doing it October 16th, anticipating being two, two-and-a-half-hour-long session. And then also potentially coming together again a week or two after that, just to kind of, there'll be a lot of it. We will send out something in writing ahead of time, so you have a chance to read through it. Then we'll come through and we'll do a PowerPoint presentation and kind of dig deeper into the overall report together. And then our thought was, if we would have one more follow-up meeting, kind of let you say, okay, I digested this, I heard what you had to say, here's kind of what I think we should probably consider packaging together. And then if the board wants to ask a assistance committee to put together a petition to request, you know, a bond referendum, maybe that could be presented at the November meeting as an option. So we'll kind of talk through that process as a part of the work sessions. But so the question is, would the 16th work or is there a different date that's going to be workable for all five of you? And Lindsay and, you know, Gail's trip team.
Yeah, and I just, I apologize. I know we had the second, and I'm now going to be on a mission trip that week, so I appreciate if we can move it. 16th works for me. One thing that I did visit with Kim a little bit on this, and we were wondering if you could put a packet together before that, though. In other words, we were going to meet on the second, it wouldn't have to be on the second, but could you get a packet together that we could review before the work session, whenever that would be?
Right, right. No, actually, we kind of readjusted our schedule a little bit, knowing that wasn't going to be the second, but yeah, we anticipate getting it up to you well in advance, like, you know, a week in advance. You know, so you can read through it.
So if we met on the 16th, maybe at the board meeting on the 9th, we could get a packet and...
Would you prefer it in print or would you prefer to have electronic?
Electronic. Do I have to answer?
We could bring you in.
I'll back to the, I'll back to the Tyler.
We can do it both. If you provide it, I'll drop it in the Dropbox and then we can have hard copies.
Sure.
I guess, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so if it was possible to get it prior to the board meeting on the 9th, my assumption would be that someone would be there on the 9th from Hala just to, you've been there every meeting to update us, is that right?
Yes.
So maybe there are a few questions, just to clarify so that our meeting can be ultra-productive on the 16th. I think it's important that we move forward as quickly as possible with this, if our hope is to put forth a bond referendum in the next four or five months. So is it possible to get information, second or third sometimes, so that we can really look through it prior to the meeting on the 9th?
I'm not sure the second, but I think we probably get to you middle, end of that week, probably, yeah. Yes, we'll do what we can. If we can speed it up, we sure will.
Well, at least part of the board packet, so that it can be a topic of conversation if we need on the 9th.
Yep, got it. And we've been doing that on Thursday or Friday, you know?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, John, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
What we'd like to do is if, when that's coming out, if we could bring that to our administrative team to, again, have a chance to talk through that and just talk about some of the pluses and minuses and where we're going, if that's a possibility.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understood what you were asking.
In other words, when it comes out in the packet, if we could have, make sure that they have a copy of that, too.
Sure.
Okay.
How many copies do you want me to have delivered? We have five board members, Super Ten, six, Board of Secrets, seven, and you want to have another four or five?
We could make the other copies at our office, though.
Yeah, in PDF format, anyway. Excellent. Okay? And then, do we want to set the last Monday or two Mondays after that for another session? Just get them locked in, be done with it, or does that work for you?
So what we, an idea would be, so we get it on the 9th or around the 9th.
Before the 9th.
Yeah, and then we have the 16 scheduled, and then we would just have the 30th in the event we need it.
Okay.
Does that, that sound reasonable?
Well, you're pretty sure we need...
Yeah.
Going out of my life.
Yeah, and then we can kind of all, just put it on our calendar so we have it.
We'll reserve it.
Yeah, and then, if we don't need it, then we can just meet on the November...
At 6:00 PM?
13.
About a 6:00, John?
Yeah, if 6:00 PM works for everyone, let's run with that time. I don't know.
You guys, does that work for you on the 30th?
On the 16th and the 30th?
All of them at 6:00, unless it doesn't work out for somebody.
Okay, other questions, or otherwise, I think we're in good shape. Okay, great. You do, though.
You know, I had the opportunity to sit in on some of them, and what we talked about was, there's data, which I think you're doing a very nice job of, but there's a little bit of a narrative that comes around it, right? And so it just encourages you, and maybe Lindsay and I can follow up with you just on that, that there's some narrative around each of these projects and not talking about a lot, but, so I sat in on the VOGAG one and the Fine Arts one, for example, and I think it will help to say, well, here's a little bit of what's behind that, you know, the band is doubled in size or the VOGAG is whatever, right?
Yep.
Mr. Davis has actually sent one to me to look at. I haven't had a chance to read through it. I've not gotten one yet from, I'm sorry, Mr. Tinder. I'm sorry. Mr. Tinder has, Mr. Davis and, I saw it from Mr. Davis and also, maybe voices too. Oh, no, I'm not, Mr. Posetti, Tim, those two were asked if they could be helpful, so. Oh, as a footnote, I think I misspoke at the high school one about, concerned about, you had way more enrollment this year than anticipated, while I was actually a year off. You're within about two to three students of what we projected using a 3% growth, which is very, very encouraging. I think I got up one or two in the high school, you're down a number in the elementary school. I just, you're down like five or six below what we were projecting. So it's very encouraging that, you know, college time we spent going through trying to decide what to go with. For this year at least, the 3% model is almost spot-on, and then we'll just monitor that, you know, year by year. And so just, I was thrilled to see that, and that's reaffirming to me that we're, the plan right now is going to hold up, is what we anticipated.
I don't know if you know this or not, but John's been gracious enough, John and Sam both, that with the new board member coming on, that if there's anything, I don't know if you had a chance, you guys had a chance to meet or not, but just to bring Deb up to speed as far as what's happening, there's, it was kind of like drinking from a fire hose on this situation. But that, thank you for doing that, because I think that's very important and hopefully it was very informative for you.
Yes, it did. We met just today, in fact.
Good.
Just spent an hour, gave her a copy of the Phase One report, went through it, and then she had some really good questions. She's been tracking the updates and kind of probably did her up to speed at that point in time, and so I think that, and it gave me a welcome, because other questions that she had, we'll never, but that's the advantage of just doing it one-on-one, we can not try and go back over material that the board's already been aware of.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, actually, our pleasure, you know, it's good. Looking forward to the next phase being completed. All right, well, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't talk too much, Sam.
You cover all bases.
All right. See you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
See you later.
Bye, Kim.
We're doing great.
It's like a Facebook link. Okay, district priorities.
Anything from, any of the building principals or anyone regarding any of those priorities?
I couldn't, for the financial division for the 1617, I put the 9.98 solvency ratio in there.
Okay.
Along with the other ones, but that won't be finalized till December.
Okay.
So I think that is what it is as of right now.
But that's the old one, right?
This is 1617, yes. So 1718, whoops, yeah.
Which I haven't gotten.
Yeah, we don't have that one yet.
No. I haven't gotten that one yet.
No.
Do you create that?
Yeah.
I think we created it last time.
We did.
We did, we created it.
I don't have it yet, or it hasn't been shared with me yet.
I can put that on our, that we do at our next meeting.
On Friday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
But that would, if it works out, John, that would allow us to go ahead and take a look at those priorities and goals, if that's all right with you?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Gail. What we've tried to do here, just so that everyone understands, we really do take this very seriously. What we've done is, we've had an opportunity to look these over, we've had a work session with the board, and, you know, some of the things that we have, these are district priorities and annual goals. The bullets that you'd have would be the annual goals that are underneath there. You can see the district priorities. And what's been is, like, there's been some brainstorming from the administrative team and there's been some wordsmithing from the board, and this is what I think that we, I tried to use this in a Google Doc and tried to go back and forth, and hopefully it's something that works out. Because I, like, I keep, I go back to what I hear Brian say a lot, and that's, we want to make sure we're telling the story and what the story that we're telling is accurate. So this is what we have as far as the different things. Any comments or questions regarding this?
I mean, Lindsay, you had indicated to the board, just a little concern, right, around, I think it was on the second page, if I recall, or not this screen, I think the next one, or is it here?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, it is there on the bottom, right? Like...
On that second, second bullet.
There you go, thank you, second bullet, on the bottom section here. Something around, concerned around tying, sort of basically accomplishment of the goal, whether or not a bond passes or fails. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
I would love to know a little more about that.
I guess the thing, and John and I had a conversation earlier as we were talking about this, I want to make sure that, as you look at that, you can effectively communicate what will be on the bond and how this will all play out. And I hope that this never happens, but it may not pass. So I want to be, I want to be very, very careful to, as we're looking at that, and I think that when we talked about this, John, I think we have an understanding of what we're looking at there, I want to make sure that we're not tying in passage of the bond to the communication, so if we don't pass the bond, that's a failure of this goal. Do you see what I'm saying?
I mean, I guess, like, at some level, I totally understand what you're saying, but I think we're putting a ton of effort into this, and I would feel like it would be, again, I'm not, I'm one voting member of a big public looking at passing this bond, right? But I would think for all the effort and all the work we're putting into it, like, I would be pretty disappointed if we didn't pass this at a personal level.
I'd agree.
And so, I mean, for me, I'm okay saying, shoot, like, we want this goal, we all believe in funding this bond, or actually, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, I believe in funding this bond, and I want to see this happen. And I would feel personally bummed out if this doesn't work out. Now, what's on that bond, what that accounts for, all the, you know, details of the project still to be worked out, part of that communication plan, but I would love to see it pass. So I'm personally okay kind of saying, even if we did tie that to, like, a goal that we, that we're putting forth as a board, but, again, I mean, we can have discussion tonight on this, but I'd be okay including passing the bond as part of the goal personally for me. And recognizing that if we didn't do it, there's some level of failure that, you know, I mean, I'm, whoever sort of approving this thing is somewhat accountable for. Now, I don't mean that in a punitive sense at all, I'm just saying, I wouldn't mind saying, hey, let's shoot for this. That's what we want. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Deb, I appreciate your view on this, because we did a work session in August, you had a draft in, I guess, September, in August. My assumption was these were yours, then edits, but maybe not.
These were the edits that I had received from the different board members.
Thanks for compiling all of them.
No, that's fine. And I just want, I just want to make sure that when I look at that, I want to make sure that, I want to pass it as much as anyone else does.
Yeah.
But I would hate to have this be a situation where that would become a punitive situation if it doesn't pass. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Because it's outside of our control, right? Ultimately, it's the voting public.
Correct.
Next step, we develop a good plan and we come up with ways that we can do that. Kim and I talked about, you know, maybe a Saturday morning coffee come October, November, and January, maybe have, get together at the winery, if we can find somebody to sponsor that, that we can promote. So just kind of really, what are we going to do for our reach to make sure that, because we're going to have a great plan, so the only way this bond doesn't pass is we don't communicate it effectively.
I think it's important for me to take it at face value. It says that our goal is to effectively communicate. We as a five-member board and Mr. Beecher and the administrative team and our group of people just need to go out, you know, we have to do everything that we can do to make sure that this bond is successful. If it's not successful, I think it means that we haven't communicated properly, because we're not asking for crazy things, we're asking for things that our district needs to move forward and to grow. And so I'm comfortable with it as it's written, and the way I see that is to effectively communicate the facility's plan to gain support. I would be uncomfortable if it says, our goal is to pass the bond referendum, you know, I, that's a singular moment in time, but as it's written, I'm very comfortable with it.
And I'll speak to the third bullet, and the third bullet was, the first draft had more about transparency, and our financial statements are available, we have audited financial statements, so it's not a function that they're not transparent, all the information's available, but it's really the communication on those financial statements, as well as some of the hurdles that are involved as a result of state funding and things outside of our control. So I think it's really a lot like the bullet point number two, and it's really the communication and collaboration is a function of, if state funding isn't what it should be, it's really going to up our game to communicate our financial position, our financial challenges, and make sure we get out to all the stakeholders of, here's the hurdles we're facing, and this is what we decided as a board to do with those hurdles, but it's a function of, the first time they hear that isn't going to be when the, when those decisions are made. We've been collaborating, they all know that this is our situation and what we're facing. And so it's much like the bond issue, is when we get to the end and we have to start making hard financial decisions, everyone was aware of it, they knew these hard decisions were coming, they may not like the outcome of some of them, but it wasn't a function of not collaborating. And so that was really a change from transparency to make it a communication and a collaboration issue with stakeholders, and certainly stakeholders is a broad definition, and I think it needs to be broad, because the challenge is broad.
And that's one of the things that I was asking John about, was the collaboration portion of it, and I'm comfortable with the explanation that he's talked about there. I just want to make sure that we're, if we put these out, that we're all on the same page.
I think I have just a couple of things I'd like to throw in there. I am okay with bullet number two the way it is. I'm not sure I would support that being written in such a way that the passage of the bond is depending on whether the goal's successful or not. the bond is depending on whether the goal's successful or not. So many factors will come into play. I think we judge ourselves on how well we sell the story, and how well we convince and, and explain the need, and get it out to as many people as possible. That alone, you know, if, if the bond doesn't pass, I would assume that's a failure on our part to do that, the communication piece, at least in part. The one that I actually struggle with, that I struggle with, because it's a little bit unclear, I like goals that are pretty much, you know, at the end of the year, it's clear to everybody, you did it or not. And that, that district stakeholders is just hard for me, I didn't hear the conversation before about who that really is. Do we, is that a group of people? Is that everyone? Is that, you know...
We can define that.
I think if we can be clear about that, not at the end of the year, these are just, I, these are goals that you can, it's a checkbox, you did it or you didn't, you know, there's no room for gray in a goal, if you ask me, but...
So Deb, when you looked at these, I think you got them a week ago, same time we did, I mean, so, fresh set of eyes, do you think that those make sense, that somebody, when they look at that, they go, okay, I understand what the priorities are, which are the main headings and the goals, I mean?
Yeah, they did. I, and I'll, I tend to look at them a little bit differently, but I, now I see maybe some of the, the thought behind it. So, for example, when I was at a board meeting a few times ago, we talked about, I think we did talk about it, like, passage of the bond was kind of listed as a bullet point. And I thought, well, so our goal is to spend money, right? Or, or is our goal to ensure that we have the facilities that we need, you know, they're all dated and they're in the proper order, you know, things like that. It was a little bit of a different kind of a twist, where the goal is really to ensure we have what we need, and then, in order to have what we need, we're going to get a bond, you know, and that's kind of a measure of it, maybe more amazing. That said, that's just the way I thought about it. I, I think it's fine. I think it's clear.
Yep. I really appreciated this last round, I think, to me, it does make sense, and again, my only comments weren't anything in particular, any particular bullet was, someone from the outside looking at this, they'd go, oh, yeah, no, that's what they did.
Absolutely, I love that.
I think it was pretty, I like the way they are revised. I think they're more clear.
So, oh, I'm sorry. I was saying, can we, can, can, I don't, I'd love to get this out to the public, I'd love to put this on posters, I'm really proud of the work that the administrative team, you know, Lindsay did, and the board, we kind of come together and built this thing. Like, could we kind of just figure out what that word is, it needs to be, sort of stakeholders or what that definition is, and kind of approve it as, as like amended, and get her going? I mean, I just want to belabor this for another board meeting, is what I'm saying.
Your, your comment is good, because I was just going to ask if we could go ahead and get this out on the posters and get it ready to go.
The reason I drafted with stakeholders is, is because if, if we put in specific audiences, there's going to be somebody we forget.
About all district stakeholders?
Well, yeah, yeah, exactly, but what I, but I mean, if, if we think about stakeholders, we know, right? We, parents, kids, taxpayers, employees, board members, Gail, I mean, it's a, it's a broad thing, and so, soon as we start defining that, then we probably get too narrow in our scope, because this is a broad problem. We could even say legislators. And so, so the reason it's broad is, is I think it needs to be broad. Now, it makes it harder for us to say, okay, gosh, did we, did we do that? Because I come to the table with somebody, we, I didn't have legislators on the, on the docket, you know, as, as part of what we're doing here. But I think when we develop the bullet points, we could, we can pick out individual stakeholders, and this is what it means for parents of the district, this is what it means for taxpayers of the district, this is what it means for what we're going to do with legislators.
I like that a lot.
So, so this is the, this is the big one, and then the plan needs to be developed further to make this happen, and so this is the high level, and then as we work the details, Deb...
Yeah, I, I think it, and I agree with you 100%, I think that needs to be as broad as possible. And so, that was my only suggestion, it's just, how do we make sure that district stakeholders is interpreted to mean everybody, you know, all these different audiences? That's my only suggestion.
Yeah, and if we could say, and if we want to put all in front of it, I think, I think that's great.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to suggest, all district stakeholders, maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
It's our...
No, I'm fine, it's good, let's do it. So if we go ahead with the all in front of that, is everyone comfortable then, or do we have to vote necessarily on this?
I think you need to vote on this, so it's final and...
Carrie, did you have a comment to just one minute?
I was just going to piggyback on the word all, I think all was just related.
We mean broad, yeah, yeah, okay.
So, so if you, Gail, you can go back to the previous document, just so Deb, I think, Deb's tracking the, the Excel matrix, the district priorities.
Oh, yeah.
Just, so what I just heard was, well, when we get to these as goals, then the plan might have some more detail, but that's going to be there, that's not going to be on a poster, right? So if it's going to be parents, well, there's a plan to inform the parents, for example.
Yeah, and is this the document that, I think, Carrie, who creates this document? Will we go through this in more detail?
Every month we do.
Every month we do, okay.
I don't do it by myself, we do it as a collective group. They don't, wouldn't want me, she wouldn't want me to put it together by myself.
So I took to approve, yep, approved the goals with the addition of the word all in that bullet point.
They'll have a second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 She beat me.
All opposed? It stands approved. Good discussion.
Please communication and collaboration with all district stakeholders.
Yep.
Okay, administrative report.
Carrie, I'm not, I'm not stepping out, my, my, my fingers just about ready to die, so I got to run and get my charger.
Oh, I thought you were just like, oh, she's on my...
I bet on you having two hour...
I have two things that I was going to...
Oh, you want me to bring up that other item?
No, I have it here, don't worry about it. No, it's, I refer to it in my presentation, in the, in the slide show, so no worries.
Okay. Am I where you want me to be?
Yes, so you want to just go to that first page. Teacher quality funds. I just put this in here because I am, you know, I know we have a new board, board member. Center file two seventy-seven talks about the teacher quality funds, and one section of that is our TSS funds that go into supplemental salary, correct?
Correct.
The other, there's another pot of money that can be used for the things I have up there, professional development, additional salaries, that would be for time be on the contract day, we can pay for subs so teachers can do, we're together in groups, like, in another week, we have some grade-level teachers coming together to do some realignment of report cards with new curriculum coming in. So that, we can take fund, we can take money from these funds to do some of that work. We can also buy some professional development materials, that would be, for example, if we have teachers that we are going to have, do a book study or whatever, we can pull from this, these funds to do that with. We could also pay a speaker. The kicker for this fund is that there's a committee that has to work together to decide how these funds should be dispersed, and that has to be made up of an equal number of teachers and administrators. So myself and Mr. Beecher are on it, and then the other two, the teachers then, the two teacher representatives are appointed through the GEA. And that's, if you have a binding group within, within your district, those are, have to be appointed, that's just written into the way the law is written. If you didn't have, if we didn't have an organization here, then they could be appointed a different way, but that's irregardless, since we are, we have an organization. So I wanted to give a little bit of background, because in the past, you can go to the next slide, because in the past, we have had the, an extra professional development day, which we've always called the TQ day, and it's an, it's an extra day in the calendar, and a couple of years ago, we did a survey with staff as to what would be better, beginning, middle, or end of the year. We had been doing it at the end of the year for a while, and we were noticing, after a few years, you know, enrollment goes down, attendance goes down, I should say. So anyway, we did it, the last two years, we've done it in the middle, so we did our survey, they said we want it in the middle of the year, great, so we did. Well, when we looked at the calendar this year, and I saw it, attendance wasn't bad last year, but it was a little bit down, and that was, I think, on January 3rd. Well, this year, it's supposed to be on January 2nd, and I thought, oh, well, I thought, oh, yuck, because I'm the one that plans it, I'm like, oh my gosh, you know, I want people to get something out of it, I want it to be, I want it to be worthwhile for people. So staff were, the GEA did a sort of survey at their first meeting to get a feel for what attendance would look like, and it was, I want, it was less than 50%, just that top of the raising of the hand. So we came up, and it's in the, it was in your board packet, and it got in late, I'm sorry, that's totally my fault, not Gail's fault. We presented a plan to the GE, or to this TQ committee, instead of doing the, the TQ day, we'd like to do a personalized professional learning plan. And what that is, for, teachers are required to do an individual career development plan, which is acronym ICDP, which we have so many acronyms, Deb, I'm very sorry about that. That, that is a requirement of part, it goes into the whole evaluation process. You can do it on your own, you can do it with a team, lots of different ways you can do it. It must be tied to initiatives and district goals. That's the, that's the realm. So we know that personalized learning is the hot buzz topic for right now. Really, we expect, we want teachers to do it, well, it's no different than what we should expect we should be doing for teachers. So this is an opportunity for teachers to write a plan for something that they would like to delve into. Now, as they're doing it, it does need to, well, how is it going to affect student, you know, what do they expect outcomes to be? So they have to have, you know, it's not just willy-nilly, anything you want to do, but what's your desired outcome, how will student learning and our student performance be different as a result of your involvement in this proposal? So they, all they have, they have to, they have through March 30th that they can turn this in, that we have to give them notice within two weeks, if, as there's any tweaks to their plan that we would suggest, or that kind of thing. Then, when they're done with their plan, and they submit their final follow-up report, part of that is they have to do a share out of their learning, they have to do that share out with a small group. It could be at a staff meeting, it could be with their grade-level team, it could be, it just, they just have to do some share out, because that's building that collaboration. After they do all that, then they get their per diem rate, the following paper. My hope is that we can really build this into lots of opportunities for teachers, and we already have times where teachers can write proposals for curriculum work that they'd like to do, and we do a lot of that in the summer, but there's a lot we could do with this. And so, right now, we've got this in place, and we will do a survey at the end of the year to see what was the thought on that, and where we will go next with it. So we just thought it would be important for you to go, to know what that was, if you hear about it. This will also be on the website under employee resources, so teachers can, you know, have easy access to the, I already, actually, we've already had to turn it...
Hey, Carrie.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the expectation 100%?
The expectation would be, well, okay, because it is not required, I would hope that it would be 100%, but it is, it is, it is not a have-to, it is a want-to, it's just like the TQ day, you didn't have to attend that.
Right.
But, so, but they have all, I mean, they can, if, you know, if, let's, for example, let's say I'm a basketball coach, and I'm like, oh my gosh, that just, trying to do something like that in the winter is really tough, but I can do it in the spring, they've got all year to figure out when they can do this. And they've been given a lot of freedom in the fact of how they can do it, it can be tied to their individual career development plan, or it can be something different, as long as they're tying it to, you know, student learning.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense? My goal would, I hope it's 100%. My hope is that next year, we can have multiple opportunities of this. That was one thing that when we met with the, I mean, this is a one-time, each teacher can do it once, because it's really in place at the TQ day, everybody could get one time for the TQ day, so everybody can get one time for this. My hope is that we can offer that more as years to come.
And Kim, you understand with that, that extra day for extra pay, that was voluntary, so if a teacher didn't want to come in on that day, they didn't have to. But I think what you're going to see is that there are teachers that really like this idea, and I think that you're going to see the percentage, I don't know if it'll be at 100, that's our hope, but I think that you're going to see more participate in this than maybe what we did for that extra day for extra pay.
I think, I think it's just, it's just as we talk about engagement, particularly at the high school level, you know, I mean, that starts at the top, and I would really love to see all of our teachers take advantage of this opportunity.
I would, I 100% agree with you. I think one thing that we can do, Kim, is we have, I have records, at least of since I've been, you know, taking care of this, of, you know, what has our participation rate been for just the day, so we'll have those, we'll be able to compare that.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions on that?
Yeah, what engagement, the TLC staff in this, or is it independent of, you know, the building and the, and the grade-level folks, or, or where, and then where are those being turned into? So who is receiving?
These get turned into the district office. These professional, these personalized professional learning plans.
For the TQ?
For the TQ.
They turn them into...
To me, yes.
So you're going to, you, you personally are going to assess all of them, or does...
Well, I'll do, no, I'll probably do them with the building principals.
Yeah.
With individual principals. It'll be, I would do them, just because they're, I, if I have questions, we'll share out together, but the ICDPs go to the building principals, these will come to the district office. But I see myself working with building principals on those.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Or do you have a question on that?
Well, I just, I'm just, to me, and I might be missing it, but, you know, we've got the TLC framework, right?
Yep.
So those folks are in place, and I would think that that could be leveraged, but maybe that's not appropriate.
No, and I will tell you, one of the things that we've said, when you say that, I mean, we've said, how could TLC support your, the plan that you're writing? I mean, you could go through, use the coaching cycle as part of your timeline through this, so that I think there's a lot of things along the way that, that can be utilized this way.
But for a high school teacher to turn it in, it's, is it Jen, that's the high school?
Yeah.
But she wouldn't turn it into Jen?
No, she would not. They, they could use Jen as a resource, but they wouldn't turn it into Jen. Like, Jen, as a matter of fact, a lot of times, the instructional coaches are asked to help look at, as they're writing their ICDPs, and I can imagine with this too, they'll get asked for help in that, okay, what does this school look, do you have any suggestions? And then it goes on to the next level. Does that answer that question?
Yeah, I just think we've got some framework there, that the more we can leverage it, and I don't know that it dictates it, but I'm looking at Vic right behind you too, I mean, so that the more that, you know, everybody's kind of on board and aligned with that, that makes sense.
I would, I agree, and I think that especially if this can be tied to their ICDP, which they're already turning into their building, excuse me, their building principals, then that's, this is just another piece to that.
Okay.
So I should say that because it's teacher quality money, our instructional coaches can also write a personalized learning plan, because they have a teaching contract, and I have, you know, we talked about what those could look like, so they would have, they would have the same opportunity to write one of those, they don't write, and I see, they, they write a professional learning plan for themselves through TLC, but this could, they could do another one in addition for this too, if they wanted to.
Carrie, I just had a question, because I think I took something that you said too literally. When you were saying that this group, but this team of, like, equal number of board member, or not board, administrators and teachers, but oversee these funds, so are the funds for the day, I mean, the, the extra day, or the things they want to do might cost money as well, right? Or am I just...
They could, and they're, that would be like, for example, when, if, let's say we have a group, and I do, I have a group of teachers that want to do a book study, we could buy those books through that.
Okay, so what's part of that?
I can't, we can't buy curriculum for students with it, we can buy, we can buy materials that would support the learning of teachers. Does that make sense?
I think so, but the idea being that the fund is adequate, that if 100% of teachers wanted to participate, they could.
Yes.
Okay.
They put that teacher component in there to make sure that it's just not top-down, that we're going to make the decision, so that they have a say, and we can make sure that we're gonna make the decision, so that they have a say and we can make sure that those are being distributed the way that the group would like to see.
And I will have to say, I mean, I, this is my third year on this, as part of this committee. For the most part, we've had, I mean, we've worked together very well on that, and listened to both sides, so. The next thing, real quick, I was gonna talk about is, yes, I do, I'm sorry, Gail, I should've said, okay. There was some questions last time about the project-based learning requirements of what teachers did and the results that we got from what teachers turned in last year. So I just wanted to give a basic overview of what, what we did quick last year, and I'm gonna give you each. I have, this is what actually, what it looks like, what teachers turned in. So they had to turn this cover sheet in. They had to turn that cover sheet in, and then they also had the, what is it, eight essential elements, and that would be the second page of that. And you'll notice, you'll, oh, I know, I'm sorry, the copy machine does that. I don't, I don't know why it copies, I must've pressed the wrong button. I'm kind of a napped when it comes to the copy machine, same with the telephone system. So you'll notice, like, it says at, at the end of each section, like here, it's key knowledge understanding and success skills. And then it says, how my project fulfills this element, that little box under. So there's a box like that under each element. And so what teachers turned in is they looked at their unit and they looked at the eight essential elements, and they were, they had to pull out, how did their unit meet that element? And what we found is that really helped us as we were looking at these, as we were looking at the items turned in, because we could look back and say, okay, now we know where they're going, versus looking at one task that they turned in. And a task is not a lesson plan, it's not like a step-by-step. The task is what they would give the student. So if we didn't have any information, if we didn't have much information, we just had to go with what it said. So this gave us a lot more information. And another thing that this gave us was one of the pieces that are part of what the teachers had to do, where it was to have critical friend conversations with their peers, to, you know, okay, this is that, you know, I'm really struggling with challenge, the challenging problem or question. And so they would have conversations about, okay, well, this is what I'm seeing in your, in your unit, have you thought about X, Y, Z? And that, I think at first people thought that sounded a little crazy, but we ask, we ask students to do that all the time. So it's something that we, I'm sure you do it in your workplace. We should be doing it in our workplace. So they turned this in, along with one task, and then five pieces of student work. And you can see on there, one high, one low, and three average. And that actually came from teachers, that they said that. And when you do the AIW model, you're, you're scoring three pieces of student work. What teachers were a little concerned about was, well, yeah, everybody turns in three, but what if they're, I think that some people are turning in their high stuff so that, you know, or their best, so that then, you know, it's skewing our score. So we said, okay, so they, we said, well, what would be fair to you? What would you like to do? And that's what they came up with. So then we took those three, those five, and we took out the three, and that's what we actually scored. And I'll tell you what that looks like now, would you go with that last one? All right, so what does that mean when we say score? So what we did is when you are, when we're looking at AIW, and I invited you guys the last time, I don't know if that was at our work session about coming to an AIW scoring, we are gonna have next Wednesday, all afternoon, our new teachers are gonna be going through the AIW process, we're gonna, it's called our AIW kickoff. So we're scoring all afternoon next Wednesday. If you're free and you want to join us and see what the process looks like, come and join us, we'd love to have you. All right, so I'm just gonna show you, I'm here, this is, this was everything we scored. This is a scatter plot of our scoring. Down here is a student work. We can get a total of 12 on a piece of student work. And what that means is, and I'm just gonna, we're scoring for, how did the students construct knowledge? What was their conceptual understanding? And what did the elaborated communication look like on that piece of student work? So that can be a total of 12. Each of those areas can score a total of, or has a area, a top of four. Here is the task, what did we ask of the kids? Those, that scores a total of 10. So you have three areas again, construction of knowledge, that can only score as high as a three, elaborated communication can score a three, and then that value beyond school piece, that can go to a four. So what does this tell us? This tells us the correlation between the task and the student work. Those areas that are up here scored really high. So that's, the student work and the task both scored high. Here, we have something that didn't score very high. And that's, I mean, we had lots of different things that, what we'll do next year is we're gonna do the same thing, and then we'll be, we'll have both, both years will be on a plot together, and we'll be able to compare the first year we did this, like this, this year, to next year. So that makes sense? And you can see, these were the, this was the tasks, these were the average scores for our tasks, these were our average scores of our student work. So really, on a scale of four, our, except, I mean, elaborated communication was a little bit low, but our construction of knowledge and our conceptual understanding, the average was a three.
Is this all grade levels, or only?
This is all buildings.
Wow, that's cool.
So if you go to the last one now, this just tells what we're doing this year. So what are our requirements for this year? We are adding one piece in for teachers this year, and I've got that for you. I don't know where, I think we actually stapled this one on the top. So this is the project design rubric that teachers will be filling out for their unit this year, and we got this, we did not develop this rubric ourselves. This came from the Buck Institute, who are the gurus of project-based learning. So they will fill that out, and with a critical friend, they will have conversations around their rubric, and the same eight essential elements worksheet that they did last year. They're gonna do the same thing. They're gonna turn another task in, and they're gonna turn in five pieces of student work. And so we will do the same process that we did this year. So that's all I was gonna share. Any questions for me?
What happens to all this great work that they're putting in and giving to you and to the rest of the team? I assume that it's informing what they're gonna be doing in the classroom?
Yeah, they get that back. Like, we make copies of it, I actually, I do keep copies of what we've turned in, just so we've got it. It's in there, as a matter of fact, locked up, but, because sometimes, I mean, I have had numerous teachers last year say, oh, my gosh, I can't, I can't find that, I misplaced it, could you give me another copy of what I, of that task that I did, because I want to redo it, blah, blah, blah. So, or they, they take, well, one thing that we've done that is a little different than how the AIW people do it for the correlation study, when you, a lot of time, in a bigger study like that, you're just gonna give it a quick score, we actually do write comments on it as to where we came up with that score from, and then we give that information back to the teachers, so they can use that. And the scoring team is made up of the administrative team and then our instructional coaches. And we do have some people, we, this year we didn't, but in the past, we have brought in other people that have been part of the AIW lead teams to do that scoring too.
Because I think there's like the really great scoring, which helps you kind of understand, was it effective? How did I put this together, all those things. It's also like this really crazy, great resource for other teachers, be like, hey, I'm looking for some idea on why.
No, and that's why, and we have, like, we have a spreadsheet that says what everybody did, so, and we're keeping that document. I mean, we want that, because you're like, why should somebody recreate the wheel?
Absolutely.
If it's already been done.
That's great.
So, anyway, thank you.
Thanks for here.
Okay, announcements and celebrations.
You guys have anything that you wanna bring to the board for announcements or celebrations?
I do, I have two things I'd like to share. First, Tracy Tenzin and Brooke Shea were recently published in the Journal for the National Council of English Teachers. There was an article that they co-wrote together, and it was published, kind of explaining their collaboration on a specific teaching strategy. And I brought you a copy, just because I think it's a great article to read, mainly because it highlights, they identified a problem, they sought out some answers, they worked on it, they collaborated, they had problems, they talked about it some more, and actually came through and had a great collaborative effort to improve their practice in the classroom. So if you have some time, read it, it's an excellent article, and that, it just really shows the spirit of collaboration, which is, which is really awesome. Yeah, the article's excellent, so you guys will enjoy it. And the second one is Curtis Martinek, math teacher at the high schools, recently awarded the Jaeger exemplary teacher award.
That's great.
It's given out to two alumni from UNI a year, and it highlights outstanding professionals in the field and their nomination processes, and they go through some screenings, and there are actually letters written by former students recommending them for this award, and he was one of two selected, so he's actually going to go to UNI one of these days in the future and receive this award, and some great recognition from his peers in the field. Yeah, kind of awesome stuff. That's all I have.
We have, you know, we have an instructional coach that went back into the classroom this year. And one of the things about teacher leadership, when this first came about, was how do you take that, allow teachers to have that, those leadership roles? And then, if, you know, when they're ready to get back into the classroom, how do you, how do you do that? So there is a digital, and it's not, it's just articles that come out through the DE, and that have to do with education, that, you know. And we have someone that's gonna come in next week to interview Jenny Pudens, just, and we just said, about what was the teacher leadership piece? How does it feel to get back into the classroom? And what is she taking away from that three-year experience? And how will that make a difference for her kid, the students that she has now? So we're excited about that.
I have just a couple, first, it's been a fantastic start to our year, everything has just gone really well. Garica White, with her teacher, was awarded $1,000 from WOI and Bankers Trust, applying for, they call it one classroom at a time, and they give that away every month, or one a month, and she wrote it for virtual reality headsets, and then the devices. So we're really excited for that. We did our first Facebook Live, whatever you call it, Facebook Live posting through, on that day that WOI came in and surprised Garica with that, and that has over 3,000 views. And then we also took your guys' recommendation from the last time, and we just did one, one teachers, or it was two teachers actually, but from one building, what they did on the professional development day last Wednesday, and just gave a little snippet, and that has over 1,000 views. So I'm meeting with Jen Schornmeyer tomorrow, she runs our social media, just to kind of put an outline together of who, how, how to get a rotation, who to hit, because I think that obviously has been pretty impactful, and that's where people are watching things. So that's exciting.
Just a quick thing to add in, some of you have been involved with maybe in the leadership aims that they do through the chamber, some of you have been involved in presenting to that group. Tomorrow, in Vic's building, we will have a breakfast meeting with about 25 leadership aims people. These are business leaders from aims that are coming in, and they want to look over what's happening. They're gonna, there's a panel of teachers, I believe, is that correct, Vic? That they will be talking to, they will be taking a tour through our building, but it's a great opportunity for us to bring people in and be able to talk about the great things that are going on at Gilbert. I did want to let you know that we did have some people that had some meetings that they had scheduled tonight, so that's why you see some of these people, either that they're not here, or that they had supervision, because we had a home ballgame, so it's not like they just wanted to scoot out there. And then, I don't know if you have been receiving any of this, but there's things that are getting out there as far as the school board convention, and, you know, what you're looking at and where we might be with that, so I don't need to belabor that. But I would echo the same thing that Amy said, and I think we're off to a great start. Things are very positive, things are moving along in the right direction, and it's because of the hard work of all the people that we have within our staff and our administrative team, and we're very, very fortunate, so.
Excellent.
EMC donation check was in.
Oh, that's a celebration for sure. What was that amount?
Twenty-four thousand, three, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Yeah, or so. First item. Yeah. Okay, new business, need to approve, designate the depository bank for 2017-18, First American Bank with a limit of eight million, and Bankers Trust with a limit of 100,000. I will entertain a motion to approve that. So moved.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stand approved. Agenda item 1102, designate Pollard and Cooney Law Firm as a legal counsel for 2017-18. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We stand approved. I, next agenda item is to appoint Vic Vanderpool as a Level One Designated Investigator, and Carrie Clark, Stacy Edwards, and Amy Rippon, and Mike Van Alson, alternate investigators of abusive students by district employees. Entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Do you want to have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stand approved. Next agenda item is to appoint Carrie Clark as Equity Coordinator and Section 504 Coordinator, and appoint Lindsay Teacher as Title IX Coordinator. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We stand approved. Okay, now something we can talk about. The I Association, the School Board Annual Convention and Delegate Assembly. I suppose, Deb, just a little bit about that is typically, what are the dates on that?
November 15th through the 17th. I'm assuming the 15th is the delegate assembly.
And there's probably some training, Deb, that you might be interested, or anybody might be, but there's usually some good financial sessions on that, that day.
Yeah, and once they get you in their email, Deb, and get your address, they're really good about mailing out information, so there's not too many things that they do.
Are you receiving anything, Deb, from IASB?
I don't believe so.
Okay, we'll make sure.
It's coming for you.
Make sure we get your name in there, so that they have a.
I've already, I've submitted.
Oh, you have.
The information, so it's just a matter of them reaching out.
I did see information about this.
Yeah, and they do a really good job on that, so if you have any questions on that, Deb, feel free to reach out to any of the members.
And then can I just reach out to Gail?
We just, we need to register by October 29th.
Okay.
So what, it's either I register everybody and you let me know that you can go, is usually, but we assume somebody can go one of those days. So it's like, I register everybody, unless you know you cannot go, then we don't want to pay for the registration fees.
So the 16th, on Thursday, that's the primary day. Would it be great if we could all be there?
Yep.
I'll be out of the country, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
I know, Brian.
The 16th is, is a good day for everybody, but the day before would be good for us to have sessions for new members, and that's, is that the day of the general delegate session?
So.
Dominate. Are you up for doing that?
Oh, I guess it was a little bit.
You already did that.
Pointed, yeah.
Okay.
I think he was gone when he said he's doing it.
As long as, yeah.
Meeting, we're gonna have Johnson. We negotiated our part.
I think that's right, I remember.
So, yeah, so sign me up, Gail, for, for the delegation, and then Thursday as well.
Yeah, and at this point, I plan to be there on Thursday.
Same here, yeah.
And then, is the president's one on Friday morning then? Okay. You want to go down to that? Yep. So we can get.
I do both.
Yes, and some for that one. Oh, okay. Okay, allowable growth and supplemental aid for negative special education, so we pretty well have that discussion. What is that motion?
Four hundred and ninety-five thousand, four eighty-eight, ten. Just a motion to.
Prove that as a.
Prove that as an allowable growth.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stand approved. And then we have the district calendar.
Yep. One of the things that we were gonna try to do was, we were gonna try to change our start time in our elementary, and we ran into problems with our busing to try to make that happen. So what we did was, we came to you with a calendar, and then we came to you with amendment, and we're gonna come back to you and say, we want to go back to the original one that we had. What it does is, it changes nothing on the days, so like, you know, Christmas break, or spring break, or anything like that. What it does is, it just gives us more instructional hours. And I think that we need to try to see what we can do in the future to see if we can make that switch. I know that Stacy and I and Bruce have had conversations over that, but there was no way that we could pull that off right now. So that's why there's a change there, we recommend approval on that.
Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
It also has a TQ day off there.
Okay, on the consent agenda, was there any items that we need to pull off?
I think so.
We need to discuss?
I think so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Stand and approve. Calendar items?
Can I bring something?
Sure.
I met with ISFIS, and, and then we had talked about, that, I brought, came back and was talking to Lindsay about the financial situation, which kind of is our third bullet point, about what is possibly gonna happen with state aid this year. And they're looking at 0%. And so, we were doing some scenarios down there, and even a growing district like us, it's devastating. And so, to start a conversation, I was hoping that I would suggest, and maybe hope, that we could bring ISFIS in, talk about, after October 1st, talk about our numbers, of our enrollment numbers, and then visually bring to the board about those scenarios of, if it's 0% for a district our size, and things like that, what that looks like, not only for one year, but you don't get it back, and what impact that is in the future.
Kind of set our jump-off point before we.
Yeah, before, you know, we go into negotiations and all that, because I, you know, we're a growing district, thank goodness. But we don't, you know, it's impacting not only this, or next year, it's multiple years down the road.
Yeah.
Gail's exactly right, because the meetings that I'm going to is, they're saying the same thing. I think, John, you and I talked about it, they said that you better be looking at maybe 0. And if you get anything higher than that, that maybe, that would be very, very fortunate. So I think that we need to make sure, and our conversations were that we get that word out to people, so they know what's gonna happen, even like Gail said, we are a growing district, but it even has a big impact on our district too.
Well, and I think at that meeting, I think we want to have the, the, the union leadership here before anything is decided, you know, here's what 0 looks like. And so we want to make sure those folks are here, and any, any of our other stakeholders, right? Because this is ground zero, this is where we're starting to work on the problem, and we hope we're wrong, and we can also run, here's what 2% looks like, but I think, I think that's what we're looking at, so that we're all kind of rolling up our sleeves and starting at the same time.
And you kind of mentioned October 30th as a possible, do we, you know, I need to go reach back out to them and ask them, you know, is something available that you, they can come and present? October 1st is the count date, so anything after October 1st, you know, I think is, would be good.
Well, I, we could also do it as a regular board meeting in November as well.
And just take.
Depending on how much time you think it is, but.
Would it make sense, I mean, to me, this, this is really, really important, but it's also something that if we continue to bring all these to the full board, to the full meetings, you know, we've got all the facility stuff, we've got all this stuff, would it make sense that we, there's a couple folks that might drive that, drive that, yeah, that might drive that, and you can, I mean, you can meet with some other stakeholders, but then maybe bring more of a summary to the board.
I think that's a great idea.
Right, rather than, I mean, I think we'll all be interested, but I think at some point, we've gotta kind of divide and conquer a little bit.
Deb, are you up for that?
Sure.
Okay.
With some, who else?
Well, me, well, myself.
Okay.
Be in the number, Brown. Just you, Deb. And anybody else that wants to join in.
I see how this goes.
It'll be a great place to. So know that that's what I'm thinking. So, okay, no, that sounds good.
Yeah, you guys can talk through what that looks like.
And we can work with our schedules.
Okay, sounds good.
Our two sentences back. Very dense, great sentences.
And then, so, October 16th at 6 o'clock, October 30th at 6 o'clock, and November 13th at 6 o'clock is all the potential facilities meetings, uh, yeah, the 9th is the regular.
Regular meeting, the 9th, and the regular meeting on the 13th, with the board work session on the 16th of October, and possibly the 30th of October.
Yeah, because that would be quite a few meetings.
Yeah, the 9th will be the regular meeting?
October 9th, October 9th, regular meeting. October 16th is a scheduled board work session. And then October 30th is a special session, possibly work session, I'm not sure. Yes, and then November 13th is our regular board meeting for November.
And then 15th, 16th are your convention, so.
It's a busy, it's a busy, yeah, next couple ones.
Move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Stand and adjourn. Thank you, Jim, for joining us.